Okay, take two. The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-hosted with the Committee of the Whole, will meet in person on Thursday, June 15th, 2023 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing ordinance amending Chapter 42, Section 75A, repealing and replacing temporary October resident parking, Section A, deleting Section D, free weekend parking for Salem residents. Parking rates at following lots be $20. Crombie Street, Old Salem Jail, and Crescent Lot. Rates at following lots be $40, Church Street East Lot and Church Street West Lot. Rate for garage locations, $20 for 0 to 2 hours, $50 for 2 hours and up. Museum Place and South Harbor Garages, October 1st through 31st, 2023. Order parking meter rate, $1, intersection Lime Street, Washington Mill Street, Margin Street, east side intersection in Endicott Street, point north of 95 Margin Street, October 1st through 31st, Saturday through Sunday, 12 to 6 PM. Residents free with Passport app. Parking meter rate, $2, 22 perpendicular spaces adjacent North Street, Bridge Street, and 4 Franklin Street, October 1st through 31st, Saturday through Sunday, 12 to 6 PM. Residents free with Passport app. Temporary resident parking, October 1st through November 1st, 2023, 5:00 PM through 7:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and 12:00 PM through 7:00 AM, Saturday through Sunday. Chestnut from Cambridge to Summer Street, Essex Street from Monroe Street to Summer Street, Hawthorne Boulevard from Essex Street to Charter Street, and Traffic and Parking Commission submitting advisory recommendations relative to extension of October resident permit parking rate. This meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Mass., second floor. In person shall be the primary method of public access to such meeting. A secondary method of public access may be provided, if technologically feasible, through Salem Access Television and/or remotely through Zoom. See below for remote access and SATV information. Please click on the agenda link found in the agenda. Password 580140, or telephone 877-853-5257, or 888-475-4499. The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-hosted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the council chamber on June 15th, 2023, at 6:08 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below. Notices this meeting was posted on June 7th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. In attendance tonight, we have all members of the committee, and also with us, we have Dave Kacharsky, the Director of Traffic and Parking, and Lieutenant Tucker, from the Traffic and Parking Division. So before us tonight, we have one ordinance, and then several orders that we're going to discuss, all related to October parking throughout the city. So I think what I'm going to do is have Mr. Kacharsky start by giving an overview of kind of what the city's trying to do, how we see these zones and the different parking rate levels, I guess.
Thank you, councilors. David Kacharsky, Traffic and Parking Director, City of Salem. Thank you. Earlier this year...
There you go.
Earlier this year, the mayor's office asked that my department take a look at trying to get additional revenues, as well as introduce additional free parking for residents, particularly during weekends in October. So before you, as a result of that effort, what we try to do is anywhere where we have a parking kiosk and people can use the app is where we're recommending these increases for visitors. It would vary either $20, depending on the lot, or $40. The $40 ones are more in the core, the Church Street lots. $20 are in some of the smaller lots that are still in the core, but on the periphery of the area. This also affords, again, residents the ability for free parking. So if they go to the kiosk or use the app, it would be free for them as long as their vehicle is registered in the city, it would show up. This would basically create opportunities for approximately 325 spaces that would be free for residents to use weekends throughout the month of October. So that's the basic orders. And again, it's intended to raise revenues as well as afford the residents some free parking. I could pause there or continue on with the other pieces if you'd like.
Sure. Sure, we can pause there for a minute. My only question was, one of them had a November 1st end. The others seem to have October 31st. We want to make those all the same. The North Street one, it looks like, had an October... Oh, no. Nope, temporary resident parking on Chestnut Street, maybe. It looked like it was November 1st. Yeah, the Chestnut Street, Derby Street, Essex Street, Hawthorne Boulevard. When we get to that, we can do that.
Sure.
We can take care of it, but do you want them all to be the same?
Well, that order is more in line with what the resident permit parking is because those are temporal resident permit streets during the regular year.
Yep.
And this is trying to give them the same level of enforcement as the other, as year-round streets, but it would be the same as temporary October streets. So those streets, and there's an error I also noted in there. Derby Street is missing. But those streets have resident permit parking, but permit in most cases, 2-hour, non-resident. So this is an attempt to say that the temporary October streets that get the green signs, these streets would also get them. So they would be afforded the same regulations during the month of October as those streets.
And so all those, the rest of those resident-only parking that goes through November 1st?
That's correct. That's the language in the ordinance itself. So it's intended to reflect what's in the ordinance.
Okay. And just so you know, Derby Street is on the order that we got. It may not have been in that whole thing that I read, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Councilor Varela.
Thank you, Chair. Quick question. I know we talked about the stop date being on November 1st. However, you know, seeing how Halloween ends on a Tuesday evening, I would think that the weekend following that Tuesday would be pretty busy as well for not only tourists, but just stimulation for October and just the residual of Halloween in general. I don't know if it would be smart to extend that over the weekend so that it kind of gives us a little more time and to celebrate that weekend there as well.
Is this for these particular streets or the ordinance that covers all of the streets during the month of October?
I was at the ordinance that covers entirety for October.
So the ordinance that covers all of the resident-only parking for the Halloween?
Correct.
So as part of our assessment, I think you saw on the notice to council, we were asked to look at extending it into September. And our recommendation with the commission was to hold off on extending it. We worked with Kate Fox from Destination Salem to get some placer data to see what it's like in mid-October... Excuse me, mid-September. And although there is more activity, it's not at anywhere where the October levels are. Same with November. It sort of peaks and then drops back down again. So we'd ask that, at least for this coming season, before we get the LPR systems in place that we've discussed, to try to keep it within the October timeframe because it would result in additional signage, issuing permits. So there's back logistics that we would have to do, DPS would have to do to make something like that work.
I completely understand that. And if that's the case, then I would definitely not make my recommendation that I did. So thank you for that clarity.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you guys are going to look at this holistically, September and extending beyond October. And if it needs a more generic way of saying that to capture the season in the future, maybe we could do that.
Right. Where even the possibility that certain areas in the downtown may start sooner than others. Understanding the food truck festival impacts the areas around the Common more so than, say, the Point or South Salem more. So again, it's trying to balance where are the impacts and being somewhat surgical if we can and not putting too much of a strain on DPW. They put up over 1,300 signs last year. So it's a lot of signage and signs get taken down. You obviously know that they're very busy during the month, so...
All right. Okay, thank you. Did you have a question?
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. Thank you, David. My question comes on regard on the 325 spaces that you have free for residents. Those 325 spaces seem to be a lot, but when it comes to Halloween season, it's nothing versus what we have here. How do you find out if those spaces are used by residents? Because I have, my own experience is I go to church in downtown, Church Street Lot, and every time I go there myself during the Halloween season, there's no space. So are there any way that you can help alleviate that? Because I know, like me, there are so many people that use downtown during the special weekends, go to church in downtown, or go to work in downtown too. Is anything that can alleviate that situation?
I mean, fortunately, it's really a first come, first served. We don't have staff manning the various slots. So it's really sort of... I would think residents may know the ins and outs better when it gets busier and if they need to get in. Now they're afforded an opportunity to come in earlier in the day on a weekend and get free parking. That might encourage them to do it during those early hours before it gets busy. I know speaking to Lieutenant Tucker and the chief, by 10:00 AM, 10:30, 11:00, that's really when things get filled up. So those earlier hours. But I don't have any mechanisms in place to necessarily afford dedicated parking, with the exception of the reserved spaces we put on the roof for those who have required to bypasses to the garage. I don't have anything else at the moment.
But the app can tell you, or can the app tell you how many residents use those, use spaces around the city for free during that month?
So yeah, we could certainly start... If this change is voted on at these various slots, we can look at that weekend data to see who registered, either at the kiosk or using the app to determine what percentage was a visitor, what percentage was a resident.
That would be an interesting number, yeah. And the meters that have the same thing where residents are free, like on Canal and Margin Street, I believe residents are free there too.
That's correct.
Yeah.
They're not meters, it's just through the Passport app. But they would have to register. There's no meters in those locations. Margin, Canal, and North, is that...
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no meters.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. So yeah, I'm very supportive of this. Potentially more revenue and more available free parking. I just have a logistical question, especially like places like Canal Street. So there's no kiosk, and if I use my app, do I use my app as if I'm purchasing parking? And will the app, you know, report back to me that it's free?
So it is licensed place based on Canal and Margin. So it'll prompt you to put in your plate. If your plate is registered in the city, we have that information uploaded to the passport system. So it would then say, "Free, no need to pay."
Terrific.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Except for the fee.
There's a 15 cent...
15 cent fee. Yeah, people question that all the time, so just to be clear.
I do remember that from when we passed this last year. So no, I'm supportive. I feel like the street I live on actually had one of the signs, and it really made a difference because the overflow is really significant. But I think, just my experience is that as people get to know this, residents, places like Margin, Mill, Canal, North Street, residents will become more familiar with their ability to use those spots which have been kind of closed out in the past.
Councilor Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Marcelo. I just had another question, maybe related to... I was talking in regard to those tickets during that time that's given to some of the residents that, for some reason, they had to park, for example, come to visit one of their relatives for a short period of time, and they get a ticket. There is any grace period during that month or everything is going to be just the same? Because I have so many people calling me saying, "Yeah, I just parked to visit my mom for 2 or 3 minutes" because of the regulation that is in place because of Halloween. Now I got a ticket. And I think I call you, I call some of your officers and ask, "Is there any way that we can alleviate that situation during that period of time?"
That, we've discussed it some. We haven't come up with a complete answer yet because it would kind of seemingly undo what we're trying to accomplish with the residents of the street getting the parking. But if we open it too wide to citywide residents, it would be a little bit defeating. So we're trying to, we're still in discussion about that, about passes and different things that could be done. But we don't, I don't have the answer yet unless you've made more progress than I have.
Well, for the temporary October streets where we issue permits to the residents, they can request visitor pass, a visitor pass. So we've issued those. So if someone is visiting an elderly relative and they need to come, the elderly person could ask, contact our office, and we've sent out additional passes. In instances where they might park in these Canal or Margin areas, and for whatever reason the app didn't work, they put in the wrong plate, if they appeal it and they show proof that they're a resident, we would rescind the ticket. So we have done that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Councilor Varela, did you have something?
No, I mean, when you're ready to make a motion, I could...
Oh, we're going to go through them one at a time because we're here, and one at a time. Yep. Okay. Because I have a question on the first one. This is the number 257 is the ordinance. And so you're adding Lynch Street and you're removing Essex Street from Cambridge to Summer. So my question is, why didn't we go ahead and add Chestnut Street, Derby Street, Essex Street, and Hawthorne Boulevard from a later order to the ordinance?
Those streets are already in the ordinance as resident permit parking, but again, they're not 24/7 year-round. They're resident parking all year, but it also permits, in the case of Derby and Chestnut, it permits non-resident 2-hour parking. And on Derby, I believe it's only in effect from 6:00 PM to 8:00 in the morning. And on Essex, which we... Sorry. Yes, thank you. On Essex, it's only in place in the commuter hours in the morning, from I think 7:00 to 9:00, or 7:30 to 9:30. So they already exist in the ordinance. This, I met with Beth Renaud to figure out the best way to do this, and she suggested have it as an order so that, again, it's a temporary condition that is sort of superseding the underlying ordinance just for that time period.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. All right. So I think we're going to go ahead and do these one at a time just so that we make sure everything's done properly. So like I said, the first one is the ordinance change. Does anyone have any questions on that? Like I said, removing Essex Street from Cambridge to Summer and inserting Lynch Street from Congress Street to Perkins, and then deleting the entire paragraph, Section D, about the lot, the Church Street West Lot, because that's covered in the order, right? Okay.
Correct.
Councilor Varela.
I'm so moved.
You're making me do the work here.
Yeah, I'm not...
Okay, Councilor Varela moves to return this to the council with a positive recommendation for first passage. Seconded by Councilor Dominguez. All those in favor? Motion carries 5 to 0. The second one is $20 a day at the Crombie Lot, the Old Salem Jail, and the Crescent Lot. Any questions on that? Councilor Dominguez.
Thank you, Councilor, Chairman Marcelo. My question is, are $20 a day to compete with the demand on other private parking that they charge 40, 50, or more? I mean, when you have competition and you go low, the demand is going to be overwhelming. So why do $20 not kind of compete with the other parking lot?
I think because this is something new. We're trying to start it out and see at these rates what the activity is like. Again, it's an order. So if we find, based on the activity, we're seeing who's registering at the kiosks and the residents, we could always come back to you in the following year with a higher rate, but this was sort of a first take on that. Understanding there's other private entities that might be charging more, but these are still within the core and a good number of spaces that we think is a reasonable one to start with.
And just to be clear, these three lots, Crombie Lot, Old Salem Jail, and the Crescent Lot is only Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 to 6:00, correct?
Correct.
During October, October 1st through 31st, and residents are free.
I have a follow-up question in there.
Yeah.
Any idea what the revenue will be used for? I mean, what are we envisioning to see? Is any, I know it's going to go to some, you know, account for the city, but there's any...
All the parking revenue that comes in goes into the general fund. So I don't have any plans necessarily for it. That'd be more of a question maybe for mayor, finance director, if it's intended to offset some of the expenses that the city incurs as a result of the activities going on during the month.
I would like to see maybe some of that revenue be targeted, more education programs for the, especially for the youth so they can get into generations education. So at the end, we get better, you know, we respond to the law and the thing that you are proposing here in the city of Salem. I don't know if my idea is clear, but I just want to mention that, you know, we target some of this revenue to educate.
I will say that that's pretty much out of Mr. Kacharsky's hands, directly in the mayor's hands. But you should definitely bring that up with him. I will say that the revenue from this goes towards all the costs of October and beyond, and the enforcement, like all those officers, all those enforcement officers that go around, they're also on a salary. But you should definitely bring that up with the mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. I agree, it could go to anything, go to public safety. So I am going to move that we move this to the full council with a positive recommendation to charge $20 for the Crombie, Old Jail, and...
Crescent Lot.
Crescent Lot, thank you. For the weekends in October. Thank you.
Second.
So Councilor Cohen moves to refer this to the council with a positive recommendation for approval, seconded by Councilor Dominguez. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries 5 to 0. Okay. Now we are on to the parking rate, $40 a day for the Church Street Lot, Church Street East Lot and Church Street West Lot. And again, that's October 1st through 31st, Saturdays and Sundays, 8 to 6, and residents are free. Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Marcelo. This is great. I think we're going to raise some revenue, and I think people who come to Salem are more than comfortable paying that or more. So I move that we refer this, the East and West Church Lots, $40 during October, to the full council with a positive recommendation.
Councilor Varela.
I'm sorry, can we back up? I wasn't done with the conversation about the Crombie Crescent. And I was, sorry, I was raising my hand to ask a question.
Oh, you should...
I wasn't voting in favor, I'm so sorry. Respectfully, I was not going to speak up. My vote would be no for the order of the parking rates concerning the $20 for Crombie, Old Salem, and Crescent Lot. I think it should be more. I think these are all smaller lots, and I think we need to stay competitive with the private lots. And I think there's an opportunity here to charge a little more money and make a little more revenue because they're smaller lots, they're always filled up, and I believe that it should be a little more competitive than $20. So with that, my vote would have been no. But I just wanted to give my comment to you guys. Thank you.
Okay. I would suggest you can make that recommendation in the council, and I think that I would take that up as a conversation. But I'll change that to a 4-1. Okay. So now we're back to the Church Street East Lot and Church Street West Lot. And did you make a motion? Councilor Cohen made a motion, seconded by Councilor Dominguez. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries 5 to 0. Next. This is the parking rate for the garages. $20 for between 0 and 2 hours, and $50 for 2 hours and up. And this is the Museum Place Garage and the South Harbor Garage. And again, this is all of October, but also including Indigenous Peoples' Day and Halloween, whenever that may be. Councilor Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Marcelo. I want to make a motion to send it to the full council with a positive recommendation for the garage on Church Street.
This is the Museum Place Garage and the South Harbor Garage.
Yes. To be $20 with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
So Councilor Dominguez makes the motion, seconded by Councilor Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries 5 to 0. Next up, we have parking rate at $1 per hour. This is for Canal Street and Margin Street. These are just small zones from the intersection of Washington Street, Mill Street... Wait. From the intersection of Lime Street to a point approximately 250 feet south of the intersection of Washington Street and Mill Street. And that's for the month of October. And then on Margin Street, from Endicott Street to just short of the Police Department driveway. And again, that's the month of October, Saturdays and Sundays. Yep, from 12 to 6. Councilor Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Marcelo. Do we have the same across the board? Okay, we have the same feed across the board for the month of October, whatever is in there. That way, not only is Sectional or Canal Street being kind of targeted $1, so can we do the whole city? So everybody is in the same...
So we first started this, it was two years ago. We introduced it on Canal Street. And at the time, we set it at $1 because of the proximity it is to downtown. The meters that are directly to the north are 50 cents or $1. And what we didn't want was trying to drive people into the adjacent residential streets where some of them are unregulated. So we tried to keep it at that rate. And it generated some money, we issued some citations, and overall, we thought it was good. It's a long-term area. People have to walk, which is fine. But we were trying to strike that balance where you're not charging someone too much. You know, just make... making it enough that they'll want to be there and not, again, go into the adjacent residents. Last year, we, we did it again, we, we charged a dollar, we added Margin Street, we added it as a dollar. And up at North Street where you have those perpendicular spaces, there was discussion with the commission to at least make them $2. Again, our goal is to try to bring some order to these areas and not charge too much, because the last thing we want to do is, is sort of, again, drive visitors into the adjacent resident areas. And again, these are really outside the core, so it's, it's still some money bringing in, but it's, it's striking that balance.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello. So respectfully, I disagree, Counselor Dominguez, for this reason. It's very purposeful, the, the parking rates. So for example, on Lower Lafayette Street, which is not only the point, but a lot of businesses there, same thing with Canal Street and Margin, I mean, I can't speak to, you know, the, the Margin part, but I think it would adversely affect some of the businesses, and even some of the residents who, like you were talking about before, may have guests come in, and to be able to go into Wyner Brothers, you know, right now, you could go in there for a half hour and a quarter, and on Canal Street, there's, you know, the Life Bridge thrift shop and things like that where people will be able to use it who are not necessarily tourists.
Counsel Verella.
I'd like to make a motion if it's appropriate.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello. I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation of the council that the order for the parking rate, meter $1, intersection Lime Street, Washington Mill Street, Margin Street East Side, intersection Endicott Street, point north of 95 Margin Street, October 31st, October 1st to the 31st, Saturday, Sunday, 12:00 to 6:00 p.m., residents free with the passport app.
Seconded by Counsel Dominguez. All those in favor? The motion carries five to zero. Okay, next is the North Street one, and this is a parking rate of $2 per hour, again, the month of October, Saturdays and Sundays, 12:00 to 6:00, and residents are free with the app. And this is 22 spots. Counsel Verella.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello, through you to Director Kucharzky. Is the rate right now $1 with North Street? And you guys are raising it to two?
It was two last year, and we're recommending it stay at two.
Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello. A question to David. Do you promote the app to some of the organizations in that area so they know, they can promote it today, fairly gracious in case they don't know exactly what's going on?
I, I haven't, but I could certainly work with the ward counselor up there and others to, to put it out there that if they use the app, they can get the free parking in that area, if they're residents.
Right, thank you.
Counsel Verella.
If there's no other dialogue, I'd like to make a motion.
Anyone else? Seeing none, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello. I'd like to make an, a positive recommendation to the full council that the order of the parking meter rate at $2, 22 perpendicular spaces adjacent to North Street, Bridge Street and 4 Franklin Street, October 1st to 34th, Saturday through Sunday, 12:00 to 6:00 p.m., residents free with the passport app.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Dominguez. All those in favor? The motion passes five to zero. Next up is the four streets for limited resident permit parking. This is temporary resident permit parking for, from October 1st to November 1st, during the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., Saturday through Sunday. And this is for Chestnut Street from Cambridge Street to Summer Street, Derby Street from Beckett Ave to Webb Street, Essex Street from Monroe Street to Summer Street, Hawthorne Boulevard from Essex Street to Charter Street.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? Counsel Verella.
I would like to make a motion if there's no other conversation about this piece.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation for the order for temporary resident parking, October 1st to November 1st, 2023, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., Saturday through Sunday, Chestnut Street from Cambridge to Summer Street, Essex Street from Monroe Streets to Summer Street, Hawthorne Boulevard from Essex Street to Charter Street. Thank you.
And Derby Street from Beckett Ave to Webb Street. Seconded by Counsel Dominguez. All those in favor? All those opposed, the matter carries five to zero. And finally, we have, this is the, this is from your office and the Traffic and Parking Commission, as you noted, discussing extending, extending the, I don't know, the enforcement time outside of the month of October, and you're, you want to study it this year and make a possible recommendation next year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Would this, would this also be for both sides of the month, as we talked about, maybe extending it a little bit into November, also depending on when Halloween is, or?
I think our goal is to, to monitor mid-September and, and see what it's like the week or so into November, to see what conditions are like.
Okay. Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello. I just wanted to ask David if he can go ahead and explain what exactly is the proposal here, so the general public be aware if they are not, in what exactly we are proposing, so we can be all educating to that.
So when we met with the mayor's office earlier this year, based on some feedback that they'd heard from the public and you all heard, there was a request to look at extending the temporary October timeframe. So instead of being October 1 to November 1, we were asked to look at, should we start at, say, mid-September? We, we took a look at that, we, we brought that to the commission, they asked for some additional data, so we had a second meeting with the commission where we presented some of our findings, we looked at the activities in the garages, we looked at placer data, and we found that there is higher activity, but it's not at the level that October is. So given we're about to embark on introducing a license plate recognition program and have permits and citations all be channeled into that program, we asked that you hold off on extending it now, we're gonna monitor it this year, see if it's, it's needed for the future, and, and come back whether to say, we think you should keep it the way it is, or perhaps there's some tweaking, or maybe certain areas may start early, so that's, we're asking for more time, basically.
Basically, what you're saying is you, you actually want to do a pilot program in early October, kind of, seeing that it is a lot of activity before the October season, you want to make sure that throughout the, the time before the tour, you get the data to see there is any possibility to maintain.
We, we want to see if, if the activity, the parking activity warrants extending the October temporary parking permits.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I could see that that would be a problem, actually. I mean, not a problem, but on the, on the outer edge of the permits, we, we, because I live on one of those streets, we certainly don't see the, the parking issues until October. So I could see that you wouldn't want to make parking more difficult in those neighborhoods any sooner than you need to, I guess is the balance there. Okay, okay. So on this one, I think this is just a receive and file, there's nothing here to vote on really, other than to receive and file, just FYI. Any other questions before we? Okay, Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Chairman Marcello. I just wanted, you know, that we receive and file, the other one, Mr. David.
So I guess this is a recommendation to the council to receive and file this report from Traffic and Parking. Okay. Seconded by Counselor Verella. All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries five to zero. Anything else? Counsel Prozuski.
I know I've said too much already tonight, but one last thing I want to say is I want to thank both of you. I know that there's a lot of thought and effort and putting into presenting what you had tonight. You did a lot of studying, you did a lot of homework, and, and I, I see this is gonna set a baseline for next year with the, with what we did tonight is gonna set us forward and what we're gonna be doing in future years. So I just want to thank you both for doing what you did.
Yeah, I will say I'm very excited about the license plate reader and that whole system and getting permitted parking through there. I, I love that idea. I think that's really great. Counsel Verella.
If there's no other, thanks.
Anyone else? Counsel Verella.
Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for coming. You guys are always thoughtful in your conversations and thorough, so we appreciate that. I'd like to motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.